Must be listening to music.
Well, we're ready. Welcome to the, uh...
(laughing).
I'm gonna say it anyways. It's taking a long time. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting and join me in the flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Boy, these guys are precision this morning.[208.01][208.01](laughing). Good, though, I'm glad they're on their toes. Okay, we'll start out with Board of Supervisors meeting, uh, matters. Mr. Vanderpool.
All right, thank you Supervisor Ennis, Chairman Ennis. Just real quick to go over a meeting that I talked about a while back, a meeting with an engineer who consults with nearly all public utility districts and community services districts in Tulare County. Had that meeting yesterday and it went very well. And, you know, one of the things, I thought that there would be real opportunities for the county to come to the table and maybe assist some of our disadvantaged, um, community services districts with some grant writing assistance and help them to improve their infrastructure and expand their infrastructure. Really, there's not as much of a need for that, they have the ability to do that within. But, for example, let's take the community of Early Mart. Early Mart PUD does not qualify for grant monies from the state of California because their rates are too low. Water rates and utility rates must be either 1 or 2 percent of median household income within the community, and if rates are below that, you don't qualify for any state grant monies. So, because the PUD is not willing to raise the rates on their rate payers, the community of Early Mart does not qualify for grant monies to enhance and upgrade their wastewater treatment facility, which would allow for new growth on the housing front as well as economic development and commercial growth. So, very interesting, and if the PUD or CSD was willing to raise their rates and get to a point of 1 or 2 percent median household income, they then qualify for millions of dollars of state grant monies to expand their facilities. So, that decision's really up to the PUD, not anything the county can really assist with. Today, there is a meet and greet with some officials from Merrimont University at the City of Visalia Administration Building, I will be attending that. I've met several times and have been working with Dr. Bob Aguilar and really support his effort to bring a four-year institution, a four-year college to Tulare County. I think that would be much, much needed and be very well supported. I will also be attending tonight's Tulare City Council meeting and presenting certificates to the Tulare Western Football Team. They won the Scholastic Athletic Award of Academic Excellence in the Valley with an all-team GPA of 3.41. That's incredible. It's very difficult when you're not doing athletics to get that good of a GPA, and for nearly 60 young men in, at Tulare Western High School, they had a team average of 3.41. I think that's just outstanding, and I'm excited to recognize those young people and their coaches. Also, this week, two new judges in Tulare County will be sworn in, Judge Howard and Judge Foltz. That will be taking place on Thursday, I look forward to attending that and supporting that. And then I actually have a few different events, practices, press conferences, and then the actual games surrounding my participation on the Tulare County Law Enforcement Road Dogs Team. They are putting on an event to raise money for the Tulare County Peace Officer Memorial, which is right down the street here, and we will be playing against a Harlem Globetrotters-esque team, and it should be great fun. I don't know what athletic ability I bring to a basketball court, given my height, but it'll be a lot of fun, and I look forward to participating and raising money for a very worthy cause, so.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
That'd be pretty funny.
Yeah, it should be, so buy a ticket and attend.
Most of us are planning on buying a ticket just so we can watch you play against someone that's 6'8". So, Mr. Chair, thank you. Last week, as this board knows, the Federal Transportation Authority and Federal Highway Authority had representatives here, working with our Tulare County Association of Governments to receive its first certification since we've become a large metropolitan planning agency. We did receive that certification with a couple of minor comments, so that's very positive note there. The meetings actually ended about a half a day early, because they were happy with what they saw, and it went very well. Today, make sure that the rest of the board members are aware, I also plan on attending the meeting with Dr. Aguilar at the City of Visalia today. If any of the rest of you have planned on doing so, I think the two of us got the words out of our mouth first and you can't go, so that we wouldn't have a quorum there. Also, at 3 o'clock, have a meeting with the Rawhide to talk to them about a step-up program, Visalia Rescue Missions Empty Bowls Event is this evening, from 5:30 to 7:30. If you would like to have a bowl of soup, out by Visalia Rescue Mission, I encourage you to go. Thursday, I will be a judge for the Tulare County Association of Realtors Chili Cook-Off, so I'm hoping that, you know, I will still have taste buds left by Friday morning. And Saturday, there is a Young Lives fundraiser event that I will be attending on this board's behalf, and then, um, there is a, was a question yesterday about when the Tulare County Association of Governments trip was, and that's April 18th through the 21st. So, they were looking for a supervisor to attend, I told them I would not be available to do that, and so I just wanted to make the rest of the board members aware, I know we do have a board trip to Washington planned the week before that, so I just wanted to make the board aware of that.
I nominate Supervisor Ashida.
I'll second that.
No comment.
Thank you. Are you done?
I'm done, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Last Thursday, I attended the, uh, the IT Tech Expo at the Civic Center, put on by our IT Department, I want to thank them for an excellent program and tremendous participation, a lot of vendors that were there. With my great knowledge about IT, I had to bring an interpreter, which is my wife, and she's a tech director at a local public school, and I learned a lot by her being there and asking questions that I wouldn't even know to ask, so it was, it was really well done. And I'd encourage members of the board to go next year, they also have a great lunch, too. Then, on Friday and Saturday, I had a unique opportunity to be engaged in the judging of the Miss Tulare County Pageant, and I've decided that being a supervisor is a whole lot easier. I mean, it was just, I was a nervous wreck, you know, I've never done anything quite like that, but the girls were just amazing in terms of their, the work they put into this whole process and the progress that they make in terms of their ability to publicly speak and present and so forth at the end of the process is quite, quite amazing, so I was really impressed. This next week, I know a number of the board members are gonna be going to Sacramento, I was going to go, and then a last-minute trip has come up with the airboard, I'll be going to Washington DC, so we're gonna be back there at the behest of, uh, our Congressman de Baladeo, trying to get some relief from the Clean Air Act as it applies to the San Joaquin Valley, so I will not be able to be in Sacramento, but I'll be leaving Sunday morning to go to Washington DC, that's all I have. Oh, this coming Friday also is Wood Lake Chamber Dinner, where they'll be honoring a number of people, and hope to be in attendance, sir, thank you.
Supervisor Ashida.
Last week, I met with the Memorial District Board, and what's happening is, Clare County has probably the most memorial districts with buildings, probably in the state of California, not the nation.
Not probably, it does.
And they're having financial difficulties, so I intend to convene a meeting of the different memorial districts and see if we can figure out how we can help these districts meet their cash flow issues. What I did find out is that some of the memorial districts went for tax increases, property tax increases, and they've been relatively successful, and those that have not are really in a lot of trouble. On Thursday, I spent the afternoon helping the Strohmmerag Boosters with their takeout dinner, and I, I was assigned to the dressing pump of filling up these little cups full of dressing, we had a very successful event. On Saturday, we had the FoodLink opening of their new facility in Exeter, and they bought the old Pinkman, Pinkham building, and they're moving their facilities to Exeter, and which would be very well located because most of our cities are located on the east side of Tulare County and not the west side. That evening, I went to the Exeter Chamber Commerce Awards Dinner, and we recognized Rose King as Woman of the Year and Chief Cliff Bush as Man of the Year. Yesterday, I attended the Farmersville, oh, groundbreaking for the Farmersville Sports Park, and they are already turning dirt, we have earth-moving equipment out there, and it's gonna be a real great addition for the community of Farmersville. It's a large complex, and it'll probably double, hopefully, in the next 10 years, and I think once they finish it, which will be this year, it'll be a real showcase, and that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Well, at least once a week, I try to get out and look at the 224 Bridge over Deer Creek that's under construction, looks like we're a couple of months away from completion, but what a bridge that is, it's 400 feet long, you just almost have to look at it to see it, to see how amazing it is, that, that long of a bridge across there. But that river widens out in that area and has been a real problem, it's, we put those low, uh, low-water bridges in with culverts in the past, and it not only washed out the culverts and the road, it washed out pipe corral on both sides, so it goes to show you the force of water and how much water can go down through there. Deer Creek is one of those, White River's another, that when they do get up, they can cause problems downstream, so glad to see that project, that's gonna be a permanent fix for that problem, and get rid of the Band-Aids and we've got a permanent fix. Last week Supervisor Ashida and I and Dr. Haas from Health and Human Services met in Porterville with Mayor Mel Stowe and Vice Mayor Cam Hamilton, John Lawless, City of Porterville, and some of their staff, and Mr. Doyle came down from Sacramento to talk about the Porterville Developmental Center. They're gonna be phasing out all of the patients out there that are mentally and physically disabled. Now, most of those patients have already been put into homes that can go out and exist in the, in the community, and I know the Shelter Workshop uses a lot of those clients, but these are more, are gonna take a lot more maintenance, I would say, in the future, so there's 171 clients left out there, and they wanna phase that out over the next four to five years. One of the questions I asked now, if you're gonna phase these people out, is this because you wanna increase the size of the forensic unit out there? And they said, no, not at this time, that they're not looking at that. They will be able to retain some of the employees that function with this, due to the fact they do have the forensic unit out there, the food services and some of those and the maintenance people will be able to keep their jobs, but the rest of them will have to find someplace else to go or be transferred, so that's a four- to five-year I don't know whether they're, I think they're doing it probably to try to save money, but I don't see how some of these intensified services these people are gonna need in these homes is gonna save many money, but that's something that we have to see. I watched that built in the, in the 50s, and the people in Porterville were actually against the development or some, coming in, they didn't want it. But we have probably had three or four generations of people that have worked out there and retired back into the community, and let me tell you, the payroll out there, with what it's, what it's operating on right now is about 21 million a year. So you can see that, that well-paid jobs, the community of Porterville has benefited greatly from this Developmental Center being out there, so remains to be seen, it's a four-to-five-year process, they, they said the state will be liquidating some of the property out there, I think they've got between 250 and 300 acres of land that they, they'll be wanting to sell. In one respect, it would've been good if, if this would've happened sooner, because we, that would've given us an opportunity maybe to put our jail out there instead of where we're putting it, on the industrial park land that we're doing, but you can't read the future, but I just hope this works out good, and I hope it works out good for the clients and the employees out there at the Developmental Center. We'll continue to monitor that and probably have some more meetings with Mr. Doyle from Last Saturday night, I attended the Beef Boosters fundraiser at Porterville Fair for the Porterville Kids, and what an outstanding event, 360 tickets were sold to that, they had site-owned auction items, they had live auction items, and I think they raised a lot of money for these beef kids, because beef projects are expensive, and what we're trying to do in the community is to build more and more kids getting involved in the beef projects, and over the last few years, we've been able to hold at 20 to 25 steers at the, at the fair, that's, that's not even close to what county does, but it's a very expensive project, and so we try to keep the kids solvent by adding on to their animals and stuff when they go through the sale, if they don't make quite enough, then we make sure they get enough to cover their expenses. And then Sunday, I went up to the Lions Club Ham Dinner in Springville, which is always a big event, and I guess this is gonna be the last year that the Lions Club's gonna do this ham dinner on Sunday in Springville, so that's kinda what I had.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If some of you read an op-ed by Senator Andy Viadak, which addressed the issue on Porterville Development Center, a lot of us have a great deal of concern about the care of those patients who are severely mentally and physically disabled, and which we did not know until that meeting, the state of California had put a moratorium several years ago that no new patients would be admitted to these facilities, and so it's been kind of like an attrition program that they've been running for a couple of years, which was news to us, but we are very concerned about the future care of those patients.
And also, my understanding was, talking to Will Galkins, one of those patients has been out there since this hospital was opened in 1955, so you can see the longevity there of some of these mentally and physically disabled patients. Okay, let's move on to item number two, this is gonna be a presentation of our proclamation adopted March 2016 as Social Worker Month in Tulare County, and Juliet Webb, come up and speak to it, thank you.
Hi, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Spada, Ms. Bill Slang, I'm Juliet Webb, Director of Human Services, and it is my abundant pleasure to be here this morning on behalf of the Health and Human Services Agency to ask that this board declare March as Social Work Month in Tulare County. I, I think, as I was listening to you talk just now about the Porterville Development Center, I think an abundant group of people in this county would also care very deeply, and that would be social workers as well, for the well-being of all of the members of this county. We have a smattering of social workers here that I'm gonna call up in just a moment that you guys can meet, see, see, listen to what they do a little bit, and then I'm gonna let you present the proclamation directly to them, but I wanted to tell you that, uh, I read a quote this morning by Albert Einstein that said, "Only a life lived in service to others is worth living." And that, those words very much resonate with me, and I do believe that they embody the, the value of what social work is. Social work is a life lived in service to others. The social workers that are here this morning do a wealth of different services to, for our children, for the aging populations in this county, for our mentally ill population in this county, they provide just an array of services and supports to ensure that our families and our, our healthy and our communities can thrive. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce some of these social workers and explain what they do for our county. If you folks could come up here behind me. I, we have Gail Nelson here, she is from the Adult Mental Health Senior Counseling Program. We have, this is Gail Nelson here, we have Maggie Hernandez, right here, right behind me, who does investigations and intake for adult protective services. We have Heather Kramer here, on behalf of the Multi-Purpose Senior Services Program, MSSP, that serves some of our most needy seniors in our community. We have Michelle Liscano, also from our adult services programs, who provides supports for in-home, in-home supportive services. We have Sophia Lopez from Child Welfare Services, and she works in our group home unit with our children who are unable, who have to be placed in higher-level treatment group homes. And we have Tanifa Marshall here, who is our Family Connections Social Worker, who provides connections for foster youth back to the families that they've, families and relatives that they have lost. So, did I get all you? Did I get everybody? Wonderful! So, without further ado, these are our social workers, and, okay.
Jeff, come on in, and Will, can you call this, Will, come on around here and present Okay, proclaiming March 2016 as Social Work Month in Tulare County. March is National Social Work Month with the official theme for forgiving solutions out to challenges for 2016. Nearly 230 social workers are employed by Tulare County. Every day, the communities throughout Tulare County, social workers tirelessly guide individuals and families through their life complexities. Programs and services provided by social workers are essential elements of the Tulare County social safety net. The primary mission of social work is to enhance human well-being and help meet the basic needs of all people, especially those most vulnerable. Social workers make a critical impact in adolescent and youth development, aging and family caregiving, child protection and family services, healthcare navigation, mental and behavior health treatment, military and veterans assistance, community development, and poverty reduction. Social workers seek to improve social functioning and social conditions for people in emotional, psychological, economic, and physical need. They believe that the county's strength depends on the ability of its citizens to lead productive and healing lives. Social workers help people who are often navigating major life challenges, find hope and new options for achieving their maximum potential. The dedication and sacrifices of social workers deserves recognition because the work they do is critical to the progress of our society. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the month of March as Social Worker Month in Tulare County, and call upon the citizens, the public, to provide institutions, businesses, and schools in Tulare County to show their appreciation for the tremendous contribution of social workers that make the county a better place for all of our residents. Signed by Alan Ashida, Pete Vanderpool, Philip Cox, Stephen Wordley, and Mike Ennis. Thank you for all you do. I think we'll need to take a picture, you wanna come back and, we'll go back through this.
Here we go. One, on three, one, two, three. Need to do one more. There we go.
Yes.
Real quick, just to make a, a quick comment, you know, I, I really appreciate you being here this morning, and Juliet, thank you for explaining the various areas that social workers work within, in Tulare County. I think that sometimes you only think that it's as, as simple as dealing with children or dealing with families, but you don't realize that it's, it's often elders, it's reconnecting individuals, you deal with such complex issues, and sometimes those issues are so difficult that you can't even fathom how this situation can happen to another human being, yet you have to deal with those individuals and those situations, and you have to help those people, and you do a tremendous job, and, and for such a, a small population in Tulare County, meaning the social workers, it's incredible, the workload that you take on and the impact that you have on those individuals that you help, so I want you to know that you are appreciated, the work that you do is, is recognized, and I hope that this month gives you a small token of appreciation from all members of this community for the work that you do to make Tulare County a better place, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to public comment.
Mr. Chair, I believe this is an action item, and I'll gladly move for approval.
Okay, second.
Moved by Supervisor Vanderpool, seconded by Supervisor Cox, cast your votes, vote is unanimous, thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to public comment. Anyone wishing to approach the board on items not on the agenda but pertinent to Tulare County may speak at this time. I do have Ms. Ricky Conlon that wanted to get up and speak. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Ricky Conlon, obviously, I came down here to visit a friend of mine, and I encountered several problems within your areas that I'm sure you're aware of, but aren't being dealt with, and I'd like to offer some assistance in this, and a lot of it pertains to your water resources and the well drilling that's going on, you have rampant drilling into groundwater and abandoned wells, and you have people what they call drilling, what they call rebel wells, all over your county. This is a national security issue because of the water, groundwater, you're the, the most valuable land in America, you know, you have the biggest water resource of all, you feed 25% of the world's population with, with your food products, you know, and you have wells going down here to the groundwater that could so easily be tainted as to destroy your ability to produce farm products for the next 100 years, and nobody's doing nothing about it, you know, the, you got people like, and you guys think he's a good guy, partner in their handle, who's, doesn't pay his taxes right, doesn't treat his employees right, and, and does nothing but, he's got, what, six abandoned wells on his property? The man shouldn't even be allowed to operate in business here, you know, and yet he's a, a big community asset? Somebody needs to look deeper into this. The, the, the problems of, the whole state of California with the water resources and the drought has been brought on by the state of California. You guys need to open your eyes a little bit and look, the public utility- People aren't putting the effort into solving their problems, okay? You guys need to fix it. This whole country depends on what Tulare County does right now. The two most important areas of the state of California is Tulare County and Shasta County, okay? I'm willing to work with anybody. Anybody would like to meet me privately and discuss avenues of finding some successful resolutions to your problems, I'm more than willing to help you, you know? I have a different outlook on things, I have a different way of approaching things. That being said, I'd also like to offer my services to the Police Officers Memorial Fund. I can probably help you guys get some stuff there. I have a couple other resources in that direction. And I'd like to comment to the social workers. My daughter wants to go into social work. She was a foster kid, she's in extended care, she's up in Shasta County, and the reason why she's like that is because we had a social worker that was the best person I've ever seen in my life, and she brought us together as a family. And the right social worker can either, you know, do a family justice, or they can tear a family apart. My family got tore apart, and another lady helped fix it. My phone number for anybody that would like it is 818-974-9055. I know I look like I'm not a very capable and intelligent person. I've dealt with a lot of people in my life. Most people that will talk to me or talk to me privately will find that I have capabilities far beyond what most people would imagine. I'd like to help your county, I'd like to help the state. I'd like to help myself. My health is extremely bad. I've lived a bad life, I've lived a hard life. I'd like to die with a bit of pride for my kids, you know? I'd like to do something with myself, I'd like to do something with the state of California. You guys would give me a chance, I'd really like to help you. A lot of things that I ain't even tell, that I've worked on, and the reason why they're not being developed is because I'm on SSI because my health's bad. If I had a couple hundred thousand dollars in resources, I'd show you a whole double world, and that's the truth, you know?
Okay, thank you, we got your phone number here. Anybody else wishing to speak during public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. Go to item number four.
We'll take the consent calendar.
Well, we can do consent calendar. Yeah, we'll take up consent calendar. We're pulling item 10 off for, we're going to pull it off for clarification. You want to go ahead and handle that one first? Okay, Neil, if you're going to come up and speak to that on item number 10?
Morning, members of the board, CAO and council. Neil Pilliard, Tulare County Parks. This year again, we've had a request from Visalia Police Department to ban alcohol on Easter weekend, as well as from park staff and other law enforcement throughout the county park system. It just makes for a better Easter for the families. We've also had a request to ban Easter for March 5th. We have a car show coming up. It's a new group, and so we'd like also to request that. We've been advised by council that the sign, request three, may not be appropriate, so have that struck. Any questions?
How do you plan on enforcing this?
It'll be enforced by law enforcement.
So, in other words, you check the people as they come in, or?
Visalia PD will handle Mooney Grove, and then our Sheriff's Department handles the balance of our parks.
Okay. Any questions?
Sure, I know we do have Sergeant James Anderson, Visalia Police Department, here if you have any questions for them. I know he's been involved in, for several years, in these events that happened in the park. I've been at some of these events in the park where it was a little out of hand. And I know also, Neil, we, something that you didn't say, we do limit the number of vehicles into the park on Easter. Are we still doing that as well?
We have previously, we stopped doing that last year. The limit of the number of vehicles was requested by Visalia PD. We've really seen a change in the dynamics of what goes on at Easter, especially at Mooney, and so we're seeing more families and seeing a lot less problems, so it hasn't been necessary.
It sounds like what we implemented worked.
Yes, sir.
And it's time to let off a little bit, okay?
Mr. Chair, my only comment was related to the signage requirement that we are now removing, but just in the future, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't specified in this agenda item, and it's irrelevant now, but if we are posting any signs, I would just ask that it be in bilingual fashion, so that it helps all attendees.
Mr. Chair, if no other comments?
Sergeant Andrews, did you want to?
Say a few words? Sure.
Morning, thank you for having me this morning. My only comment is, is that specifically with car show events, when you involve alcohol, and the entire event is centered around vehicles, eventually, some of those people get in the vehicles and drive them as they're, after they've been drinking or intoxicated. So, it has a large impact on Mooney Boulevard after the fact as well. So, that's one of the main reasons we would request that alcohol be prohibited for those events, for the specific event.
Thank you, thank you for your comments.
Sir, I was going to move, but no other comments, I was going to move the consent calendar, items 6 through 15.
I'll second that.
Including 10?
Yes.
Okay. Moved by Supervisor Wordley.
Seconded by Supervisor Cox.
Seconded by Supervisor Cox. Cast your votes. The vote's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Now, we'll move to item number four, request from Resource Management H.D. to approve increased tipping fees.
Actually, item number four is that...
Oh, no, no, okay, yeah.
Good morning, Chairman Ennis.
Pardon me.
Good morning, Chairman Ennis, members of the board, Mr. Spada, Ms. Bales-Lang. The item before you today is a request to hold a public hearing for the approval of the issuance of revenue bonds in the amount of $25.25 million to be issued by the California Municipal Finance Authority to the Family Healthcare Network for the financing and refinancing of loans for the construction of healthcare facilities within Tulare County. First, as a point of clarification, on February 2nd, your board approved a similar bond in the amount of $15.25 million. Subsequent to that approval, we got a request from the California Municipal Finance Authority and the Family Healthcare Network to increase that amount by $10 million to refinance loans for two healthcare facilities that were constructed in Visalia and the city of Woodlake. Therefore, this request is for a total of $25.25 million. The reason your board has to approve the issuance of these bonds is because U.S. government code requires the approval of these bonds to be made by an elected body. The issuer of these bonds will be the California Municipal Finance Authority. They are not an elected body, hence, these bonds can be issued without your approval. Even with your approval, the county will incur no financial obligation for these bonds. So, that's my brief presentation.
Any questions from the board?
No question. I just, Mr. Chair, I just want to say that, you know, it's great to see this kind of investment in our community by Family Healthcare Network, and I realize part of it's refinancing, which again is astute business action on their part, and it's great to have that sort of activity in our county. So, I move approval.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak to this item? May do so. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board.
Renew my motion.
Yeah. Move approval.
Seconded.
Moved by Supervisor Wordley, seconded by Supervisor...
And again, the county will incur no financial obligation.
Cast your votes. Vote is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll go on to item number five, public hearing to increase tipping fees. Bryce Howard.
Good morning, Bryce Howard, Director of Solid Waste. This is a little different item for me. I'm not used to coming to you asking for rate increases. It's not something that I actually enjoy doing, rather go the other way. We've done some of that in the past. We had our mattress program go from implementing it, you know, at a certain rate, and we rolled it back once we got some state funding. And to our larger contract institutional haulers, we were able to give them a little bit of a price break to encourage them to bring us our business. But, we're seeing a change, and this will be the first of probably several that I'll come to, in a change in our pricing of certain types of recyclable materials, whether it's green waste, CND, or metal, and in this case, tires. All of those things are under price pressure right now, all those things are going up, and it's causing us a problem, but it's also causing our vendors a problem to try and keep making money doing it. So, today, we're dealing with a tire issue. Tires are a contract that we signed back in the fall. Our tire vendor went from $80 a ton up to $180 a ton. Significant increase, over 200%. We're asking for a rate on the bulk tire rate, which is more than 10 tires, to go from $140 to $185, but no change on the individual tire or the individual truck tire. Sort of compensating, you might say, for the bulk is going to compensate a little bit for the individual, so still encourage the program. But I think it brings up a bigger issue that I have been, the understanding of this board's desire is for each one of these recycling programs, if you want to call them that, to pay for themselves. And so, that is our goal, and that's why we're under this price pressure. As we get into some of the other ones, I think specifically later on, you'll hear me come back about our CND contract, and about metal, and about green waste, the discussion's going to be a little more different, because I think those are really going to change pricing-wise more substantially. But for right now, we're just looking at this one piece. We do collect now, for the first time, a franchise fee that your board approved. We are starting to get some of that money, so I hope in the future that some of those franchise fees are able to potentially offset some of these recycling programs as they continue to be under price pressure, because I don't expect us to change this year or even the next coming years. So, we're hoping to mitigate some of that by giving, maybe in a way, giving some of that money back to the citizens. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I understand there's a lot of pressure these days because of fuel prices, where, and the value of recyclable products is plummeting, and markets are changing, and we have no biomass industry basically left to take green waste, and there's just a lot of pressure out there. My only concern, and I certainly support this process and this request today, is all of us live in the unincorporated parts of Tulare County except for Mr. Cox, and as we drive around, one of the things we see oftentimes on the side of the roads are tires. And every time you raise the cost, and I appreciate the fact we're trying to keep the cost down for individual tires, but usually you see a pile of four, right?
Right.
And that's just, my only concern is that as we raise those prices, how many more do we see, you know, going to be dumped? And so, instead of trying to raise more revenue to cover our costs, we end up spending more money to have to go out and collect those tires and get $0, and not only to get no money from them, but we also then have to pay for the expense of bringing them in. So, what I'm just saying is, I hope we would somehow kind of chronicle that as we go forward, as we make this change, are we going to see a difference there, and what that might be? Because I think it's something we always have to keep in the back of our minds. Trying to recover costs is a great thing from a chairman's standpoint, but then there are all these other offsetting issues that come up.
Mr. Chair, if I can respond to that as a city dweller? You know, it's just not out in the unincorporated communities. If you get a one-yard bin in front of your house to do some cleanup work, or, you know, these 10-yard bins get dropped off in neighborhoods for major remodels, they're quickly filled with tires, couches, mattresses, things of that nature. So, it's just not something that happens out. In the unincorporated, it happens everywhere. And, you know, you're never going, well, you're never, you're not going to be able to curb the activities, these illegal activities done by people who are going to break the law anyways. If I go to a, I had a discussion about this with Chairman Ennis yesterday, if you go to a tire shop, you get your tires changed, you pay them a $3, $4 fee to take your tire, that's passed directly through to take care of that tire in perpetuity. So, you're going to have dishonest people that are going to break the law, and unfortunately, those are things that are just going to happen. I don't think this is going to affect that one day at all, because your people that dump roads on the tire, or tires on the road today, they're going to do it tomorrow as well, so...
Supervisor Vanderpool?
Yeah, Bryce, my question's really more around the pricing. What are the rates for tire disposal in, let's say, Kings, Fresno, Fern counties?
Well, so, one of the key elements that keep reminding ourselves is that the car tire, you bring, if you have three or four of them, it's $2 a tire. That's not changing. If you have truck tires, and you have less than 10 of those, that's $10. That's our same rate. Those rates are very competitive compared to the surrounding communities. In fact, they're probably a little lower, especially the car tire one. So, we're trying to encourage that. It's the bulk rate, 10 bus tires, and those are the ones we're moving 30%. So, it's more of a business that's doing it that's getting hit with this, unfortunately. We're keeping the other ones lower.
Okay, so, the over 10 tires is...
A bulk rate.
And that bulk rate is not something that other neighboring counties have?
They do have them, and it's competitive.
Okay, so it is a competitive rate then?
Yes.
Okay, and then, the other question I was going to ask is, I'm contacted by constituents every once in a while that have, let's say, 20 tires dumped on their property in the country or something, and they're left with that. Do we have any documented program, or, I guess, course of action that we regularly would take for that landowner to clean up and have the disposal fee waived or discounted rate when he's cleaning up? I guess there's no way to prove it, but I was just curious about that.
There are some state programs that are being implemented to sort of handle agricultural areas or rural areas for tires. We're working with the Sheriff's Department to sort of work through those.
Okay.
See if there's any other funding. Right now, we do fund a Sheriff's Department illegal dumping pickup program, and a vast majority of that is tires.
Okay.
So, you know, you're right, Supervisor Wordley's correct, that we take a lot of tires in for free.
Yeah.
Want to call it that, through that illegal dumping program.
So, now, and then, sorry, another question came to my mind. How do you prevent the bulk rate, let's say someone's going to bring in 20 tires, well, maybe he just comes, you know, three times, three times during the day with seven tires, right? I mean, is there, do you get that or not? I'm just, I'm really just trying to get this kind of figured out.
Well, there is some transportation cost with that, of course, but of course, you could sit outside the gate and, you know, drive around in a circle. I haven't seen too much of that.
All right.
I wouldn't be surprised if it happens.
Okay. Good deal. That's good enough. Thank you.
Bryce, your customers, the big customers that bring in large amounts of tires, are those from tire shops or where?
I'm not really sure. They're not through an account, but it is...
They probably got their own way in.
But it is the majority of our income, if you want to call it that, comes through that piece. Not the majority of our customers, but the majority of our income, so that's why we can move that piece 30% and cover everything else.
And Mr. Chair, I brought that up in my statement, because that's a pass-through. Most tire shops charge you.
Right.
So, they pass that through, so it's, you know, the customer, the end customer's the one ultimately paying that fee anyways.
It's a similar weighting factor where, and a lot of things we do in solid waste, put more of the burden on the commercial side than on the residential side. That's sort of typical of what happens, and I'm still not thrilled about raising the rate. It's not something I like to come up here and do, and I'm hoping that as we go forward, there might be an opportunity to flatten it, at least not raise it again for a while.
Any more questions?
It's a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak to this item, may do so.
Kind of strange that I'd come to this first board supervisor meeting and I never attended. And one of the things that I've always been interested in is the production of energy and the collection of waste products, and I worked extensively on tires and mattresses. Shasta County, when I did it up there, we were going through the Parks and Recreation, a guy named Gordon Carpenter, and I had a fairly good plan for the mattresses. The city refused to allow us the land to commercially operate on, and then turned around and went into business for themselves. They were real nice about that. I think you guys got your problem solved already, you're just not looking at it the right way. Again, I'd like to meet with somebody privately and tell you what I think you maybe should do, and you might be able to financially make Tulare County way more profitable than what you think. You're doing, you know, you've got a couple of things you need to alter in this county. You guys are a natural resource far beyond what you realize, you know? And tires need to be gotten rid of everywhere. And tires need to be gotten rid of everywhere, they're a problem for everybody. And that's, the DMVs are just not approaching that properly, because they know who has cars, they know every car has four tires, you know? And a little pre-planning, they can get rid of the tires without causing such a problem to everybody's communities. I'd like to speak with your guy that does tire recycling if possible, whenever I could and, you know.
Right, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak to this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve.
Moved by Supervisor Cox.
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Wordley. Cast your votes. Vote unanimous, thank you. Okay, that concludes our regular board meeting. Do we have need for closed session? Counsel?
You do, Mr. Chairman. Item A and item B are off your board's closed session agenda. I'm sorry, and also item B, A, B, and D. You have items A through G, and I do not anticipate any announcements.
Okay, thank you. We will convene to closed session.